Good evening, and welcome to the zoning board of appeals for August 16th, 2012. Just introduce myself and the board members. I am Sarah Treese. I'm acting chair tonight because our chairman is not here. To my left is member John Hallen, to my right is our newest member Frank Lynch. We're going to be taking things a little bit out of order because Mr. Maribito has another appointment in a neighboring town, so I hope that that is not a problem for anyone. Mr. Maribito?
Thank you.
And you want to read it, Nicole?
My name is Paul Maribito from Ross Engineering Company, representing the owner of the applicant. The subject property was purchased by Mr. Ferris' parents back in 1947, which had a constructive of 530-foot square foot houses. It's relatively small. The application has been filed pursuant to Section 830 of zoning by law. As the structure, it's not 30 feet from the front lot line, it's only 21 feet. That is the only existing nonconformity. We're also filing, we're filing to seek approval to build in addition to the existing dwelling, which is nonconforming. The existing proposed structure is what's shown on the plan. There's a 136 percent increase in gross square area. The proposed structure will need all of the required setback lines. There's a small shed at the rear which will be removed and replaced within the setback line shown on the plan. Again, it does have the required lot area, the required frontage, lot depth, and setbacks, so with that on my presentation, I answered a question. I should note, I did in the narrative provide an analysis for the special permit criteria where it was the flat picture of 19 Richfield Road. Do you have any other questions?
Do you have any renderings of what the proposed process is going to look like?
If you have, it's, it's a, you can see the photographs, it's a one-story house now. The existing is going to have the same roof lines. This is what you see from the street. This would be the existing. You're going to add it here. It's got its own one-story structure. This photograph is the application. It's a small house now, the roof is a small one basically.
And then, is the existing dwelling going to remain, or is that?
Yes, they're going to add to it.
How do you get from the existing dwelling to the proposed addition? Is it all, it looks like open decks. Is there a way to get?
Oh, this is going to be removed. This is an existing deck which was-
Okay.
And they'll just remove it out of the house.
So that will be-
That's fine.
Okay.
It'll be replaced with a house.
That's, that's right, let me figure it out.
Yeah, I just colored that in brown. You know, the brown is the outline of the new house-
Okay.
For the addition. And what they'll do is add an open deck to the rear of the house.
All right.
Any other questions? Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Is there any questions or comments by the audience? Please, if you could just stand and identify yourself?
My name is Lydia Green, and I live on 12 Maple. So I think I'm directly behind the house.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. And I was just wondering what the distance is between the new house and my property line.
Okay. This is showing the plan here. This, this is the line that the house could be built up to.
Uh-huh.
This line is 30 feet back from the property line. The proposed house, oh, I'm sorry, it's 20 feet back from this district. The new house will be 30.9 feet back, so the new house is actually further away from you than it has to be.
Which is, how, can you tell, just tell me how many feet the new house is from-
The property line?
The property line?
30.9 feet.
Okay. Which one of those is the existing?
I'm sorry, do you have to identify yourself first?
Joe McSwingin, we live kitty corner to the house. Which, which building is the existing house there?
It's the one shown in yellow.
Okay. So the building is to the right of it?
Uh-huh. No, this, this is the new addition here. It's actually to the left if you look at it from the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Any discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to grant special permit finding to instruct an addition which will increase gross square footage of pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling by 136 percent. The dwelling is located at 19 Richfield Road and reflected in Ross Engineering, dated July 16th, 2012.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're good to go. Who's, who's, who's turn? I know it must be Ed. It must be Ed, show it now.
It's me and Peter, but you guys, I mean, you all, you both wrote one the last time.
Right, I'll start if you want me to.
That would be an easy one.
Can you, maybe you, Paul?
Anything?
Okay, thanks.
And if, maybe Paul could-
Email it to him?
Yeah, well, or you can email it to me, and then I'll pass it on to Frank.
Okay, you'll probably have my email.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You know, can we just get Mike Hazes out of the way, too?
Sure.
No, I talked to Mike. Mike, Mike is looking for an extension to his extension, and I spoke with him, and there has been, just one week ago, a new law where they've extended the extensions. So basically, I have a copy of it for the file, but the new law says that the Permit Extension Act of 2012 says that he doesn't need to do anything, and we don't need to do anything, he's automatically extended. So I have a copy of that for the file, and I don't know, do you need a copy of this?
Did, the, the original permit was granted in 2008?
Correct.
Extended?
Correct.
When, 2008?
Well, it's, the new law says-
September. The new law is four years from-
Correct.
The date it was-
Originally to expire. So he would have to, 2014.
Okay, so he would, under this, he would have had, okay, he would have had two years normally.
Correct.
Now he has four years from that day-
Correct.
For 2014.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So-
So we don't need to do anything?
We don't need to do anything. He didn't need to be here.
It's an easy one.
It's the Permit Extension Act of 2012. It was just, it was just signed into law on the 8th, I think, of August.
So are you, the board doesn't even have to make a motion or do anything, so whatever?
It specifically provides we don't have to do anything. So, anyway, so that's, that was an easy one. Next.
Next we have Susan Langer Strom of 55 Kenneth Road, request MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, special permit finding to construct an addition which will increase gross square footage of pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling by more than 20 percent. The dwelling is located at 55 Kenneth Road.
Hi, I'm Susan.
Hi, come on up.
Have a presentation.
You don't have one?
No.
No, we expect one. Well, why don't you just start by-
Please sit at the table where you can-
Yeah, have a seat.
Okay.
Tell us what you're looking to do.
We are looking to add on a garage with a room above the garage, and it is over 20 percent of the house. It's like 34 percent, I think. And the property, I think, is 9,600 square feet. I, I thought it was two lots, but it's not. It's just one big lot. So there's a, you know, huge chunk of space there. So it'll, it'll look good.
I'm sure your neighbors are looking for hope. How, how big is the house now? Does it exist? How many square feet about?
Probably like, maybe-
I, I don't recall.
Okay, maybe-
I had the paperwork, it's on with the application, no, I didn't run it in.
Maybe 2,000.
Yeah, it's about 2,000, and the addition was about 30 percent greater, as I recall.
So to 20.
I just want to mention that there are other nonconformities. The, there's a side lot nonconforming 3.1 feet, and front yard nonconforming 22.3 feet.
Okay. Is that good?
In the, in lot size.
That's bad, that's why it's nonconforming.
In the frontage.
It is what it is. It's not, it doesn't affect feet.
Oh, okay.
But the addition's going to be, it looks like you've got it planned for 13.4 feet from the, from the side lot line, correct? Okay.
It's to the rear and the right of the house?
Correct. That's my husband.
The addition conforms to that.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
Is this the drawing here?
Yes, that's it.
Yeah.
I didn't get that.
I think it's in the very last page.
Oh, yeah, I did.
I'm just wondering why it's dated 2007.
It is? Or is that, I don't know-
That's the existing house, I think.
When was the, when was this addition planned? Is it back in 2007?
No, that, the, there was a dwelling there, and they, we bought, we bought it in 2008, and they, they-
It was a renovation construct.
Yeah.
It was a previous renovation construct.
In 2008?
Yeah.
In 2007, and we bought it in 2008.
Oh. So this was somebody else's plan, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And you guys decided it was a good idea?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's it, that's cool. I was just wondering why we're looking at a plan that's five years old.
Yeah, I didn't even notice that.
Yeah, I'm actually familiar with the house. The, they came and they did a massive renovation on the existing frontage, and they had, they had plans to add on. At that time, I could have issued the permit, I could have made the finding, and we certified the bylaw, not required to come in front of the board. And, yeah, it's, it's a valid five-year-old.
Okay.
Certified by law.
All right. Is there anybody here that wants to be heard? Any further discussion?
Not here.
Mr. Motion Man, you want to make a motion?
Sure, let's see, we already did the extension. Let's see. Request MLGL Chapter 48, Section 6, special permit finding, construction of an addition which has increased the gross square footage of pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 55 Kenneth Road by more than 20 percent. And based on the plan dated March 42nd, 2007, with that application, although, that's it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I say one thing, or is it too late?
You're relieved.
Well, it depends on what you want.
We're going to change our mind?
No, no, no.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, just, I, I think they said you had 90 days or something, but if it's possible to get it okay.
Oh, we've been trying to get them out, yeah, as quick as possible.
Okay, just to, because it snowed in October last year.
It snowed after that.
All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
My turn?
Stop.
I'll write that one.
You want to write that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to write that one?
All right, I'll write that one.
Yeah. Our fourth application is Matthew Mermes and Arnold S. Borthing.
Very good.
I did it, right? 7 Surfside Road, and Paul Conies and Sue Bearfree Conies.
Conies close.
Sorry. Of 9 Surfside Road, requested special permit pursuant to Section 610-2B of the situation by law, and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to create a 50-foot project lot located at 7 Surfside Road.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Owner.
Hi, I'm Bill Warburg, and with Jeff Delisi, I'm here with Neil Murphy. I'm also here with Paul and Susan Conies, who live at 9 Surfside, which has shown as Lot 2 on that plan, and Matthew Mermes' home is at 7 Surfside Road. And just a little, little way of background before I get to the, I gotta look over here so I can see it. Right now, the property is the Surfside condominium in which there's two housing units to it. And in essence, we're not looking to construct anything new or do anything. We're looking to change the form of ownership from a condominium ownership to, to single lots. And what will be required is there is a, connecting these, there's a breezeway, and there's a covered porch, which would be removed as noted on the plan. And the lot number 2 at Conie's own at-
9.
At 9, at 9 Surfside, is 10, is our 3 zone, is 10, over 10,000 square feet, meets all the required dimensional setbacks in the zone. The, the Mermes home back at 7 Surfside is actually has 50 feet of frontage, and has 27,000 as proposed. This is all one lot right now, you have to understand. It has 20,000, excuse me, 27,000 square feet of, 26,845 square feet. And so we're, we're here under Section, two things, or any other relief the board may request. We're, we're here under Section 610-2B, and to request that basically, we're not looking to do any other construction, we're just going to remove and then go to the planning board this. And what, what the reality of this is, is that even though it's a condominium ownership, and that's the way the people own it and bought it and all these things, for both the utility of the families, to be able to have their own yard, not have it be common area, is something that's very desirable for both of them. I don't see, there's no question, there's no increase of density or anything else. And it's very simply, as a matter of fact, it becomes less intrusive, because actually the connector of both these properties would be removed. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what the petition is, and what we're looking to do. As far as under 610-2B, meet all the dimensional requirements that are required, one of the conditions on this would be as, as required on the Section 3, would be to the effect as a note would be on the plan that would be signed by the planning board, the A&R Plan, that there'd be no further subdivision of Lot 1 on that. So that's something that's required by the bylaw that'll be on that plan. And also, as is shown on that plan, there'd be a note that there'd be removal, as already says, to the breezeway and the covered porch. So that when you create the lot line, there wouldn't be any other zoning issues relating to that. But in a nutshell, that's what, that's what the request is.
One of the things I, I was wondering about as I looked at the plan is, is where's the access?
The access to which?
Well, to the back, well, actually, I assume to the back property, but it's-
Each property, each property has its own driveway.
Yeah, the plan doesn't reflect the driveway.
Yeah, each, it currently exists, each, each plant has its own driveway over its own frontage.
Where is it? I don't, you know, it may not be reflected, but I, I don't understand where it's at.
It doesn't show on this plan, because this is a division plan, but the access to here is on this side going up to the garage. The access here is right in front of the garage.
So if it isn't shown on the plan, we'll put it on a plan, a condition that each property, the access to it is on frontage.
The, the access to it is on Surfside Road?
Yeah, yes, that is a pancake out there.
So at first, it looks like that whole house is the frontage.
The access shows them. The plan is the frontage.
Oh, yeah.
This is the front, this is the driveway to that, and this is the garage.
And what are the proposed property lines?
The property lines are right here and here.
Oh, okay, I get it.
This is all-
Okay, so this is, okay, okay, I see it now. Okay.
That was conservation.
So the dash line is the lot width, not the property line?
Yeah.
And the garage will end up on this property being how far from the lot line?
From here to there, so that's-
Well, that's not marked either. That should be marked on that plan.
It's on here.
Yeah, it is marked on the plan.
Did I, did I miss it? Where?
That should be 8 feet, that's the sideline.
Which line are you looking at?
Oh, from this. It's kind of weird how that goes.
Yeah, the garage in the plan's 8.5 in the back, 9.2 in the front.
I think they're referring to the proposed Lot 1?
Oh.
The back end of the garage?
Oh.
The garage is over 30 feet.
Right, let's see, I just think, no, we could scale it, and it's over 30 feet, but-
It is over 30 feet, it's a house, it's over 30 feet. That's from the house, not from here.
Right.
Oh, okay.
The ditch allowed to be, yeah, over the lot, yeah.
That's actually a side line setback, John?
Yeah, we come in now? Okay.
But, but still over-
I think it has to be 8 feet.
Yeah.
What's considered, I, I'm talking about where the, I noticed where the portico is, and then there's the garage, and then as you-
The gap should be 8 feet from there, to the garage. It's about, it's supposed to be-
So this line is considered a side setback? The back line of the, of Lot, let me finish. The li, the lot line, I'm sorry, this is Lot 1, correct? No, Lot 2.
Lot 2, right.
Okay, the back line of Lot 2, and how, what-
Is it?
I know, and what's, this is what I'm wondering, what's, what's, that's what I'm talking about.
Actually, you're look, you're not looking at the plan of the submitted application.
Okay.
Look at this plan, look at this plan.
Okay.
First, the front yard setback would actually be measured from the street, not from this line here. So actually, 100 plus wherever that distance is, which is why the distance, I think, probably wasn't really that big, doesn't make a shot.
Neil, you're right, you understand what I'm talking about? You agree with that?
What, I'm reading the, what are you, what are you, Brian, you're-
Sarah was asking about what the front yard setback is, okay?
Relative to the garage.
Relative to, well, she was asking what it is from here to here.
Oh, to the line.
And what I was saying is, is that the front yard setback is actually measured from the street.
We don't have front yard setback, we have street or way setback.
We have what?
Subsection, street or ways.
Oh, okay.
Because it's, it's not referred to as a front yard, although in most cases, in most cases it is front.
Okay.
Strangely enough, that would probably be a side yard.
That would be considered a side yard setback?
This is the side yard?
Yes.
Okay.
But what is it?
Correct, what is it?
8 feet is what it should be, it's about 25, yeah.
What is it? I know what it's supposed to be.
I can find out and give it to you exactly, but I didn't put it on the plan because it's all over the gate.
It should be on that. All the setbacks should be on the plan. Okay, so, I mean, I, I believe it's going to be more than 8 feet, but it still needs to be on the plan. Do you have any comments, Neil?
You know, I, I guess in, in reality, really, it didn't have change, it didn't have change ownership, and you would discretion to issue a special permit.
You should.
Yes. I, I think they did something similar in the past, still around Porter Street. Mr. Mermes was at the meeting when that occurred, so.
Do we do one at 8 Gannett Road, too?
It was at 147 Porter Street, John, on Stephen and Lily, Stephen and Kristen and Lily back in October.
Okay.
You did do one on 8 Gannett Road.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
Yeah, on 8 Gannett Road, also.
As well, kind of right, right across the street from you guys, they had a similar situation.
Yeah.
And I think they were undersized lots.
Correct.
But this is actually not an undersized lot.
Right, and nonconformity was created, I believe, in that situation. In this situation, it's not.
Yeah, I think it'd be an improvement, too, with kind of eliminating the, the covered walkway that was just put up to kind of meet zoning originally.
The question was that of Mary, of Mary Rupert.
Yeah.
Show us to Frank. Yeah, gives a kind of a commercial feel to it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience that have comments?
Hi, I'm here at Claire Chase, and we own the property at 11 Surfside right next door. How does this affect that property? Does it move over the land at all?
Actually, there's actually no change in the-
So I see on the line here, I mean, on the, sorry, on the form that was sent out, it says 8, sorry. I didn't see anything here with like, this is a front lot, what does that mean?
What, I'm sorry, what did you say? What does what mean?
The notice that was sent out said to create a 50-foot-
Frontage lot.
What does that mean?
It, it, what they're doing is taking the back of the house, and the, the access to the back of the house now is a 50-foot lot to the left side, so they're not moving any of the buildings. No addition is coming on. The only portion that they're changing is removing the roofed walkway between the two buildings now.
The, the question I have about this is, unless the whole town has changed their zoning laws, that was something to start McMansions, so that they were, wasn't there always supposed to be a connection between lots? They had to put the connection in order to build that second house. That was required.
Yeah, I don't-
Well, yeah, it's because, yeah, it's because-
Was that a true?
They had doubled the lots, well, actually, they had triple lots.
Triple lots.
Yeah.
If you have double lot size, you can build a two-family, and that's what they did.
Right. So why would you remove it if that is consistent?
Well, I, I'm not, well, do you want me to?
Just go ahead.
Yeah. No, the reason for this is, between, between the two homes, there's no difference whatsoever other than removing the connection. So there's no additional construction, and all it is, is a form, change in ownership. So as opposed to having a condominium where both homeowners own all the land together, now it's, now it's such-
No, I know what it is. I, I'm against it.
Oh, I didn't understand your question.
Because the whole point of that was so that, I'm assuming, the point of this in situat is so people don't buy properties and create McMansions on these, you know, because it's already has affected the house at 11 Surfside immensely, to have these gigantic houses on this lot, okay? So I don't understand why it would be, but our law has-
Oh, you know what?
Where is that?
We can't have a dialogue between people in that. No, no, let her, let her finish her question.
No, but what I'm saying is, I, I think what, you know, the whole point of this, my assumption is they did this to begin with, then they were going to do exactly this and take it away once a house was broken down, okay? But I don't get it, if you have a law to begin with, why you would allow that to happen.
Well, the bylaws allow them to do that. They can come in, and they can ask to have a 50-foot frontage lot created.
I still don't understand what 50-foot frontage means.
50-foot frontage means on, along a street, how, how far your property line runs.
Right.
Okay? In situat, it's 100 foot generally.
Okay.
Okay? But you can, under certain circumstances, have a 50-foot frontage, okay? So that's what, right now, they've got over 150 feet. Right, it's 100 and-
I can give a little his-
Is it showing what?
I can give a little history of the 50-foot.
Okay, I'd love to, that would be nice.
Up until about 1992, I think it was, you could build a house on a lot that had a 50-foot frontage and at least 5,000 square feet. The law was then changed probably five, six years ago to discourage large development, and they required twice the lot size of the neighborhood. So it's, it's, it's been an evolution. Our original bylaw was 50-foot frontage, then it went to 100, but they still allowed you to build on a 50-foot frontage lot.
Right.
It's now by special permit, and it's, it's further restricted because you now have to have double lot size. And they have 26,845 feet, where they're only required, they normally would require, be required to have 10,000.
So all the, so what they're asking to do is then to take down the-
The what?
Just the front.
Just the connection.
Wait, wait, what do you mean, breeze?
Okay, again, we're not going to have a conversation.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just-
Why don't you come out and take, take a look at the photographs? You live there, so I'm sure you're aware of it.
Why you can have that.
Okay.
And what, I mean, it's-
Thirty-six. Up until about nineteen ninety-two, I think it was, you could build a house on a lot that had a fifty-foot of frontage and at least five thousand square feet. This is not considered a grandfathered lot under state law, which also allows it, but you have to fulfill certain requirements. As a matter of right, if you have five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage, you could build a single-family house. The, the bylaw was changed to allow a fifty-foot frontage lot then by special permit on a lot that was property with the size of a neighborhood, in this case, would be ten thousand square feet. The law was then changed probably five, six years ago to discourage large development, and they required twice the lot size of the neighborhood. So it's, it's been an evolution. Our original bylaw was fifty-foot of frontage, then it went to a hundred, but they still allowed you to build on a fifty-foot frontage lot. It's now by special permit, and it's, it's further restricted because you now have to have double lot size. They have twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-five feet, where they're only required, they normally would require, be required to have ten thousand.
So all the, so what they're asking to do is then to take down the?
The what?
Just the breezeway.
Just the connection.
And they also.
Wait, wait, what do you mean breezeway?
Whatever.
Okay, again, we're not going to have a conversation.
No, no, I'm just.
Why don't you come out and take, take a look at the photographs? You live there, so I'm sure you're aware of it.
Why you can have that.
And what, I mean, so the frontage is considered the street side, not the ocean side?
Right.
You know what the breezeway is? Between the two?
No, I know, I didn't know that was called breezeway.
That's coming down. That'll be gone.
Because you own a house in the ocean, we used to call it front yard.
Yeah, sorry, I thought they were charging above the lot on the left.
That's what I thought it was, the front was the ocean.
Yeah, no.
In addition to that, they're right to the back lot, can only be one home when they do this as well.
Can't be for the subdivision.
Yeah.
So the part that is over.
The ocean.
The ocean side cannot be moved on.
Well, cannot be for the subdivided, there can't be another.
They can't divide it up and say, now we want to have two lots because we only have to have a ten thousand square foot lot, so.
Given up in the right.
And under the bylaw, it's also limited to a single family.
So they can't have a two-family back there.
No.
Right.
Can't put a two.
Right, I mean, it's no offense against the new people who bought the front part of the house, but it has brought down a lot of property value for the house next door, and so that's why the concern was to come here tonight and hear what.
A lot of people might think this would increase your property values, because you no longer have this breezeway between.
We don't have any privacy, so, deep, deep from the window that you can see right through, so.
Why would that increase our property?
You know, I, I.
I'm Claire Chase, and I own the property.
Hi, Claire.
I would like to know why you feel that would have.
Well, I didn't say it would, I said it might. I don't know, you know?
How?
Well, because it, I don't personally, to me, this is not very attractive.
Well, neither is.
I think that looks very commercial, and I think it'll probably look more attractive without that.
I think I'd like to see that picture, and I can't walk up to it.
Well, you know what?
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I'll get it. Thank you.
So you understand that structure's going to be, that's part of their permit, that that structure's going to be removed? Okay, anybody else have any comments? Sir?
I, I just think it's sort of.
First of all, can you identify yourselves?
I'm Kevin Sullivan, I live on Wampe Tuck Ave, but my parents own a house on Five Gannett. So I, the only thing that confuses me is when they built this house, I think it's a lovely house, it's very nice, they didn't want to put this portico up or this connector up, but the town, for some reason, said, no, the rules are, you've got to have these two properties connected, so now they go through the expense of putting up this connection, and now they're turning it around and saying, oh, no, it doesn't have to be connected, we're going to tear it down. It seems like not only is it an expense to the Murmies and everyone else, it just seems like it's unclear what the rules of the town are.
Well, they've made an application under a particular section of the bylaw.
I, I understand that.
And, and the way the law is written, they can ask us if they can make this new lot, okay? They take their, they take out their pencils and erasers and draw a new lot line, and, and under the bylaws, we can do that.
Yeah, I understand.
In terms of how property is going to look, it's going to be exactly the same, except for the, the connector between the two properties is going to be gone, and the ownership, legal ownership, instead of being a condominium where all, everybody owns the whole property and they're individual units and it's all common space. Now they each going to have their own two lots.
I, I fully get that. I had thought before I came that that was going to be setting an odd precedence for the town, but it sounds like because of what went on, it's an eight Gannett that, that should have sailed.
Well, I don't think that's, I think that was just another example. I don't think that set the precedent, just another example.
So if it's not setting a precedence, then I think, or if that has not already done that, then I think you're at risk of doing that. You've, you've got a property, they created another dwelling on the property, they set up a condominium relationship between the two existing dwellings on the property, the town create, there was a bylaw that said, or some rule that said they had to connect these two properties, and now you're saying, okay, we're done with that, let's move to the next phase, tear that down, completely subdivide. Is that what's going to happen in Situate? People are going to build up and say, okay, I'm going to connect it to make sure I put all the dots in a row, and then as soon as that's done, I'm going to come back in front of the board and say, oh, you know, I want to change this.
Neil, actually, I think this bylaw was added, when was this, this bylaw added?
The, first of all, you've got to keep in mind that a two-family could always have been built on this lot as a matter of right. It could have been substantially larger. That breezeway could have been, you know, pre-built.
Houses, yeah.
Frankly.
Please, I don't mean to interrupt.
Please don't then, you know, let Mr. finish it, and then, and then you can respond.
And I've made the observation myself, Situate bylaws are very liberal. We don't, we have no lot coverage by law. In that area, the setback is eight feet from the sideline, very, very close to the sideline. We, up until I changed it, we had a forty-foot height limitation, it's now thirty-five feet, and that was done in response to the McMansions. Doubling the lot size was done in response to development. That was done the last five or six years. And I think, I, I tend to take a common sense approach to this. Yes, they went that route, two-family, and they had to have an attachment. Nothing is really substantially changing by taking out a breezeway and changing the font of ownership. I mean, what's there is there, you know, that's my opinion.
The thing that's mostly confusing is why put up that attachment in the first place? There was no functional, this is a guy looking over the fence, you know, making an observation. It doesn't seem like there was anything functional about attaching the two houses. It just seemed like a checkbox. I've got to do this, check it off. Okay, my six months is.
That's correct. And not to make it one building, you have to have a group detachment. And that precedent, as I said before, that was set thirty years ago, before my time, breezeways were considered a, you know, an attachment that constituted one building.
This needed to be one building at the time? In order for this to be built at the time, it needed to be one building?
Right, right.
But that's no longer the case?
And it wasn't built that.
It is the case, unless, unless you grant a special permit.
And it wasn't built, it was built as a separate building, they put up a roof, walkway that connected the two structures, and that was it. It wasn't intended to be a single dwelling, it was two separate dwellings.
Yeah, I mean, that's an arguable point. There is no definition of what is a single building. What I've said here, the precedent's been set long before my time, and Mariposa is an example, there are other examples all over, and that's just something passed on down through the ages, and, you know, I, and it's about a flimsy thing, if you can do it, make it one building, I agree. But you make them put a roof on it.
Mr., go ahead, one more, one more question.
One more statement. So I have spent my entire life in Minnetonka, and I just think you, you're running this risk of the whole town, the whole neighborhood, even coming down into San Hills, it's happening in the neighborhood, that we're going to see a transformation into something very different. It's something very non-Situate. I mean, I, I sit on the, on the deck in one of the homes that used to look out over the ocean, and now I see this huge house right in front of me, which is beautiful, which just isn't really Situate. It just doesn't really fit into what I understand or what I've known as Situate, you know, my entire life. So I, I think that's the risk you run. The Chase's, beautiful little house right on the beach, you know, I grew up dreaming about the Murmies' house, the most beautiful house. I loved this, loved this property, loved this house, and the transformation that it's gone through is, it's not great. It's not good for the town.
Yeah, just an aside, it's, just to go to the point, clients respectfully disagree, I think it's a beautiful house, but all that's, this isn't something where it's subject, this is a very unique lot. It's like, how, how many lots in Minnetonka on the waterfront at twenty-seven thousand square feet? Yeah, yeah, there aren't any. And so I'm saying, you have a very, you have a very, you have a very low density thing. As you can see on the, on the northerly side here, on the sideline setback, sixty feet, six zero.
Yeah, there's a lot of space.
Yeah, a lot of space.
I know I've already spoken, and this is probably not the place to do this, because it's, I think it's different, I mean, it's an issue that probably has to be brought up somewhere else, but it's unbelievable. This, this lot was bought as a development property, okay, and it got developed from our neighbors who had lived there for, what, fifty years, okay? And I know it's within the laws to do it, and they did everything exactly by the rules, because the developer knew exactly how to do it.
This is a home.
Okay.
All right, all right, no, 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 you know what, folks, folks?
Okay, but you're, you have your house for sale after you develop.
All right, all right, all right.
But all I'm saying is, we're here.
I'm going to end it if we can't do it ingeniously.
Okay, I can't, I can't say something?
I may, yes, but I just, we're not going to have a, okay, you want to finish what your statement is?
Thank you. I just want to say, I want to agree that this whole, the people who have owned these houses for so many years, the neighborhood is going downhill, and I don't know where the place is to develop this, I mean, to talk about this as a town. It might not be this one little space, okay, but the whole town and the whole Minnetonka area is getting, all of the oceanfront property is going downhill, and all the people who own this are leaving, and it's, it's heartbreaking, okay? Not just that the values are going down, it's also people's lives, and it's heartbreaking, and it's also monetarily screwing people, okay, that live there.
Okay, somebody, does somebody, we're going to have for someone new, ma'am?
I'm Suzanne Conies, I own the property in the front, and, you know, I understand the angst that you're going through, I totally do, but I do think that if you walk around the area, there are several houses that have a condominium attachment, and I believe yours is set up that way as well. You've got a residence in the front and somebody different but related lives in the back.
They're two separate places.
All right, please.
But there's other.
All right, folks, please, we cannot have conversations, this is not a dialogue. If you want to go out into the hall and just chat about it philosophically, please, but you, you know, honest to God, I understand everybody, I understand both sides, but, but things change, okay? And the, the mechanism by which change happens, it, this board is contained within this book, and this guides what we can and can't do. And they have met the requirements, and they're here for the special permit, and I think, you know, I'm sorry that it changes things, but things change. Town change, challenges develop. This is the law. If you don't like the law, if you don't like the way it's going, get involved yourself, work to change the bylaws, but right now, this is what governs what we get to do and what people get to do, and if it's, you know, that nothing's happening in, in, you know, at this application, that is illegal. One last comment.
Special permit is not the law, so they're asking to go against the law.
Okay, anybody, any, Mr. Murphy, do you have a comment?
I'm going back to a little bit of the history that Neil dug in behind. I was elected to your board in nineteen sixty-three, and in nineteen sixty-six, I was the one as chairman who changed the bylaw for allowing fifty-foot frontages and making them special permits. They had to go to the Board of Appeals. Prior to that time, they could do it anywhere they wanted. In Minnetonka, if you go to Curly Home on Gannett Road, they did a fifty-foot strip and built a house up and back. They also, they've done that all over town long before this, all up Porter Street, there were fifty-foot lots, the whole length of Porter Street, leading back, if you go up Porter Street by what is now the River Club, from the River Club back, I think there are six fifty-foot lots together, side by side, and houses up and back. That was changed to prevent what they're complaining about. That was a law right up until nineteen sixty-six, but it changed to allow the two-family house to become something, if you had more than double the frontage on the lot, that made it possible to do what they're doing now. They did try to do it through going to the CBA in the beginning and didn't get the permits, so they had to go to the two-family home and splitting it the way they did, as condos. Now they've come back and they've asked you to split that into two lots, which I think is absolutely an improvement. It's something that gives two separate people no more condominium law and the right to use their own property by themselves. So I favor, and for the record, I grew up in Minnetonka, I've lived there since nineteen forty-one, so, and I'm seventy-six, so I've been there a long time. I certainly know the Chase's and I know the other people there, too, and I've seen things happen down Surfside Road that have happened, they're different businesses by far. The difference here is it was a Soya Home, which is a huge home out back. That's why it's so frontageous to people.
All right, anybody else on the board?
No, just a comment, as I say, I still think to take the existing kind of two-family, make it two single-family homes, essentially is what we're doing here, and they also give up the right in the back to expand, too, so I think there is some protection there, and we've done this in the past in similar situations, a few other, over the past couple of years, anyway, a few other homes, and I think the reason for it is, it works in this situation. You know, I think the, the idea of kind of cleaning up the, the walkway, if you will, and, and, you know, separating it that way, I think will work out, and both, both on town sewer, I take it, anyway, so.
Right, they both have septic systems that they put in, now they're connected to town sewer also.
Right, so those.
Frank?
I just have a question, I guess, if, if there wasn't a restriction here that you're, that you're agreeing to, is it true that this property in the back, the one on the ocean, could be expanded? I'm, I'm just trying to understand what the restriction is that you added.
The restriction is, is one, you can only have a single family, so you cannot go to get additional units on this.
Got it.
And so that's that, and the other thing is, there's a further thing, which will be noted on the plan, that's filed with the A and R, under the bylaw, that it cannot be further divided, so they can't divide this under, in other words, it's prohibitive, like in other words, you can't, you couldn't even get a variance to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
All right, I think, I think I'll close the discussion, unless anybody has any new point to bring up? Okay.
Except that we will sell the house just as soon as we can, if we can, since they built a house right on our line, I'm not so sure whether we will be able to sell the house sooner. We just want to get out of there.
Okay.
For fifty years.
I'm sorry, they're going to be sorry to see you go, because I bet you're a lovely neighbor.
Well, I hope we have been. We've never had a problem with neighbors before.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion?
Move to grant the special permit request for seven Surfside Road pursuant to Section six ten two B of the zoning bylaw, granting, to create a fifty-foot frontage lot at seven Surfside Road.
Second?
I should say, as shown on the drawing.
As shown on the plan, I'll. Mr. Murphy.
June, I could never read Mr. Murphy's writing. July two thousand twelve, filed with the, with the board.
And do we have to mention the lot at nine in that as well?
Say again?
Do we have to mention the lot at nine, or the seven is the fifty-foot?
No, it complies with all the dimensional.
Right, right.
Okay, and, and you will, you'll correct the plans and get them in just for the record?
Absolutely, we'll have this in, in the next couple of days.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're good, you're good to go. Are you guys going to do the decision?
Yes.
I'll do it.
Yeah, we'll do the decision, Senator. Sarah, can you tell me, what's, what's the, on that permit extension, do you have the citation for what, what act it is? I mean, what bill number?
I've got a, I've got some copies, if you can have one.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, I caught that.
When was the, when was the case in nineteen sixty-six?
Anything else? Okay.
A motion to adjourn.
Welcome to chairmanship.
All in favor?